Coming, we have students and John, I'm assuming is on, actually, you know what? I didn't read the text.
Oh, where abouts?
He texted me earlier, hold on, let me make sure, I don't want us to... Totally inappropriate to be, I'm sure, doing this. Yeah, he said see you at 6:30. So, well, we'll get started, he can join us when he gets here, because I'm sure he won't be more than a minute late. We'll call the meeting to order, join me in the pledge, the slide.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much. So, I remind everyone that this is a public, this meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14, and remember, any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the session, to first notify me as chair, and I will inform the public of the recording as is required by the open meeting law. So, we're gonna start with our no-guff video, we're sporting our t-shirts, for good reason, we get to celebrate, even though it's already over, it's still, you know, it's still always fresh. Thanks, Sharon.
John, your shirt.
(laughing) Thank you to Ms. Goulart for making our video for this year, it's always a highlight, always gets a lot of social media traction, and for our awesome t-shirts, our supporters who give them to all the kids, it's just so awesome. Anything you need to add, are we okay? Okay, great. So, public comments, we have no one here, so we're gonna just move right through that. And our student advisor couldn't make it tonight, so we'll move right into the public hearing on the budget. So, I officially opened the public hearing on the budget, and we have a presentation.
Okay. Mr. Murphy and I will go through the budget for FY19, the budget that we proposed to the school committee. Sharon, why not just, can you go to the first slide, please? Thank you. So, if you can't see that, it says, "The Falmouth Public Schools, in partnership with our community, will provide a comprehensive, culturally proficient, challenging, and responsive education for all students while rising to meet the increasingly complex needs of students, families, and educators." Can you, wait a minute, can you go back to that? I'm not done. We've talked a lot about the increasing complex needs of students and families, we haven't spent a lot of time talking about how those needs impact educators, and that is something that our administrative team, and certainly the instructional leadership team, has been looking at, because we do need to support educators in working with kids whose needs and profiles are changing and becoming more and more complex. So, when we build the budget, we always consider the three pillars of the strategic plan, and many of you have seen this before through budget subcommittee meetings, so I would just ask that you hang in there with me one more time to take a look at this. So, if you consider the three pillars of the strategic plan, the first pillar being teaching and learning, academic growth and achievement, the goals of this budget are to maintain our competitive class sizes, to sustain the programming that's already in place, and that means the programming and the staffing needed for the programming, to update the curriculum to reflect the changes in the standards, so that impacts the budget, to increase department chairs across the curricular areas, and what that means is I'm asking again for a health, PE, and wellness department chair, and this is the third budget round that I will be asking you for that, to continue our professional development to support accelerated learners, we've been doing a lot of work around that, and we're looking to provide clerical support for both HR, library, media, and technology, those two departments here at the administration building. So, we look at number two, the second pillar, which is access equity and opportunity, supporting learning environments for all students. We have been really happy with our work with McLean Hospital, our collaboration with them. I'm looking to add a school adjustment counselor to the Connect program at the East Falmouth Elementary School, as we see the needs rise in that elementary program. I really would like to sustain our CIBAS and our alignment of special education programming district-wide. We need to strengthen our inclusive practices, our cultural proficiency, and our trauma sensitivity for all educators, and I need to support the function of HR. In our community partnerships, we're really looking at promoting communication with families and the community using a range of media sources. We're also looking further out at some type of family resource center, and while it's not in the FY19 budget, it's part of that three-to-five-year plan moving forward. So, there are three positions that I'm asking for that are new. Again, it's that Director of Health, which is at Wellness District-wide, which is a 1.0, a school adjustment counselor at the Elementary Connect program, the central office clerical support, and you'll see below the line, the staff assistant at Falmouth High School. That staff assistant is currently paid partially through the budget, partially through the fees, and what I need to do is roll that salary into the operating budget. And I know that fees will be a conversation at a later time, but at this point, I don't want it paid by fees, it needs to be into the operating budget. So, while it's not a new position, the funding source will be changed. So, if we dive a little deeper into those requests, as we've done at the budget workshop and any budget subcommittee meetings, we go and justify what it is that we're asking for. And again, I put that third year in there, I think this is a really important position. And what I will say is with any of these positions, if the entitlement grants come back at a lower rate than we have adjusted the budget for, these requests, they go away, because the primary piece for me is to maintain what I have, and we've, we have come up with assumptions, and we're working on educated guesses around what the cuts may be in entitlement grants, but if they come in higher than we thought, then I would not be adding anything, I would be working harder to keep what we have. So, there's the justification for that, that health, phys ed, and wellness. This is not new. If you go to the next slide, the school adjustment counselor. We've talked a lot about the Connect program, we've talked about working really hard to keep students in their district school, we have a robust program at the East Falmouth School for the Connect, but we need to beef up that social-emotional support at that elementary level. And the staff assistant, we have again, just moving that over into the operating budget. Here's the clerical support, this is not an exhaustive list by any means. I know Cindy Tugus couldn't be with us tonight, but I think when we shared the organizational chart with the school committee to show all the different pieces that the directors do, and then any support services that they have, which Cindy does not at this time, nor does Dr. Santa, they need some clerical support. So, if we look at the considerations, and again, this is not new, but we look at the assumptions, we're looking at our student enrollment, 3,450 is the estimate, and the way we come up with that estimate is we roll all the numbers forward, all the kindergartners into first grade, we roll them all out, we subtract, obviously, the seniors leaving, we use the same kindergarten number in our estimate to come up with the number, and then we subtract a certain number going from eighth to ninth, because there are students who go to a different high school. So, we work to come as close as we can, but that number can change, as you know. So, that's an assumption. Our overall utility costs, we're assuming they will continue to remain flat, inflation right now is low, our out-of-district special education tuitions, we've done a really nice job keeping kids in the district and supporting them to the best of our ability, and going to an out-of-district placement if and when we have to. We are, the circuit breaker reimbursement has been reduced to 65%. Chapter 70, the state budget, is still in process. We have our entitlement grants, and again, reduced with the possibility of elimination, we know that Title II-A will be eliminated, and the other entitlement grants will be reduced. We don't know exactly how much, but we go and budget and estimate between 10 and 20%. So, if you look at the variables, again, the state budget information, the cost of healthcare, the impact of the collective bargaining, which we're in our final year, and that's a raise of 2.25%, we look at our vocational and charter tuitions, the rising general education, special education transportation costs, it's a major consideration for the budget, and then, again, the reduction of the entitlement grants. So, when we're building the budgets, we look at those assumptions, we make the assumptions, and then we look at the variables. So, the next slide really speaks to the trends in the entitlement grants over the past three years, and you can take a look at those, and you can see the decrease over the past And then, we have historical considerations and comparatives for budget development. If you look at the per pupil spending, and we compare that to surrounding districts, and you can see that Falmouth is bold right there in the middle.
Nancy, I'd just like to comment, this is a great slide. I mean, they're all very helpful, but from my perspective, a lot of the different things, you know, is a reference point, and this both has the surrounding towns' reference point and the years, so thank you, this is great.
Oh, you're welcome. I think it is really important. And then, our next slide, you can look at the town allocation and enrollment trends, so you can see the student enrollment, you can see the appropriations from the town, and you can see the FY budget year, from FY09 to FY19. Student demographics, percentage of the district students who qualified for free and/or reduced lunch, can take a look at those numbers. I would just like to highlight, although it's not on the slide, when I break it down by school, we're looking at Mullen Hall at 37% free and reduced, North Falmouth at 21%, East Falmouth at 52%, T-ticket at 53%, and that does not include the pre-K, because the pre-K kids don't have lunch. Morse Pond is at 35%, Lawrence is at 31%, and the high school is at 30%.
Can I ask the question?
Yes.
So, would this be under the category of economically disadvantaged with DSE?
Yes.
Now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if we move on, you'll see the budget history and requests, broken down by school. And I would just call out that there's, you'll see a decrease in East, if you look at 18 and 19, and an increase in T-ticket, and again, you have to remember that we moved the pre-K from East over to T-ticket. Then we look at our sources of funds from 18 and 19, and you see the funding source on the left-hand side, the appropriation from the town, which includes Chapter 70, you see circuit breaker, our school choice monies, and then the entitlement grants.
Ask a question?
Yes.
So, when we calculate per pupil, the per pupil number, is it on the, this total, or is it on our local appropriation total?
No, it's on, it's on the, it's actually a calculation that's greater than this, it's on the total amount that the town spends on education.
Okay, thanks. I just wonder whether all towns calculated the same way.
Yeah, so if you...
So, that's as big as it could possibly be for Falmouth.
You can't do a simple divide, the number of students into the local allocation, it doesn't work.
But do all, is it sort of a requirement that all districts calculate it the same way?
DSE actually does the calculation.
DSE does it, okay.
They give us the number.
Great.
Okay. Good point.
Question. Leah.
For our entitlement grants, what do those fund?
I know, that's a big question.
Yeah, so, there are a lot of entitlement grants, that, when we say the term entitlement grants, it means, these are federal grants that have been in existence for a very long time, decades, it's, they're grants that many, if not all, districts are quote entitled to, and they fund, they fund a range of things, there are special education-focused entitlement grants, in this district, Title I is used for primarily reading support, Title II, the one that we think is going to be eliminated, has been used to support mentoring and some level of professional development, and those types of, those types of efforts. And then, there's some smaller ones that are across the board that we've seen fall off entirely, also, some of those are special ed. We saw a little uptick in Title, Sonia, which one did we see a new?
Four.
Four, right. And potentially, there could be an uptick in one of those related to ELL, but it's minimal, it's, you know, they reduce one by 90,000 and give you 8,000.
But IDEA, 2.4 is a big grant, that's a lot of salaries for special education.
Salaries, okay.
Yes, there's a, there's a percentage of it that can be for supplies, but it's very small. It's mainly special educators, related services.
Teacher assistance.
Special education, teaching assistance, primary.
So, that's where my question was going, if we, if these go lower, and we need to go into some of these requests, it would be because there are some salaries embedded in here?
It could be.
People that we really need?
We have to keep.
Yeah. Bill, did you have a question?
No.
I don't want to make you have one, you just looked like...
I guess, the more I listen, the more I get frustrated, because I'm trying to put two and two together, and I can't get four, and obviously, the federal government doesn't want me to get four, because I look at the free and reduced lunch, and certain elementary schools are almost at the 50% level, high school 30, 30, early 30% levels, and so, I look at then, poverty, economically disadvantaged, at-risk, need factors for kids, and then I go back to Title I, 2A, which is professional development, and essentially, within the next year, we look at possibly losing under the $93,000, but yet, we want to support our teachers in order to continually work and develop and work with these kids, and it just hits me that, from a federal standpoint, and something I read from Pennsylvania today, is they're looking at additional cuts in the feds, and you start putting it all together, and public education is really taking a rap. And it's sad, because we are in this business for all kids. We put the Statue of Liberty out in front of all schools, all public schools, and anybody who walks in, we take, and we'll supply anything we can to make them successful, and we're getting to a point where, from a budgetary complexity, we're not gonna get there. And that's a sad case for public education entitlements, especially the federal government. So much for my soapbox.
Leah. I hear your soapbox.
We all do.
So, in thinking about the subgroup of economically disadvantaged, which used to be our free and reduced lunch percentage, or numbers, when, when we look at the schools, and we see that there is one school, East Falmouth, that's over 50%, is there anything that, does Chapter 70, does it allow local schools, not the district, but if there's a school that is that high, do they get any additional? So, with economically disadvantaged, ELL, and special education, there is some, there's some additional funds that come with Chapter 70. Now, when we have a school that's over 50%, though our overall district is 30%, does that school get any additional supports?
So, I could answer it in two ways. One, the guidance that is provided through the entitlement grants is that, yes, those schools receive supports, there are schools that receive Title I support in terms of staffing, where another school does not, not necessarily. The second answer, so that's at the federal level, at the state level, and it's, it's so early in the, in the state budgeting process, that I don't want to, you know, sort of say this might happen, but the initial numbers that came out for Chapter 70 for Falmouth were fairly positive, but they reflect the equation, and those, the equation is that our economically disadvantage has gone up, our ELL has gone up, and those types of things. So, I don't know what, how that's gonna actually tease out by July or something like that, but, so, but Chapter 70, I just want to be clear about this, in the town of Falmouth, the way the budget process works, the Chapter 70 rolls into the town, and the town receives that and funds us, you know, at a higher level than net school spending, and then, the town has been terrific over the last five years, our experience, in terms of trying to meet the needs going forward. So, you'd sort of look at it in two-year cycles. So, you know, my, my thought process would be, if Chapter 70 does come in at higher than expected, next year, as we know, entitlement grants are going down, that we could be, we could continue having this discussion like we did last summer, and say, this is, this is what we see, can you begin to plan for it in September? So, we do think of these in multi-year cycles rather than, you know, one-year cycles, and I think that's been a really nice step forward for the district and, and obviously, in our relationship with the town.
So, Title I would support more, if we have a greater number of economically disadvantaged students in one school?
The resources are targeted there.
Would the resources have to go to that building, over another building?
Okay.
Like, there are elementary schools that aren't Title I, that don't get Title I services, because they don't meet the criteria.
And in addition to that, if, if, you know, if the needs are severe, and we have some of our support folks, they're directed to where the needs are, you know, they're not sitting idle and saying, can I get over there? They are directed to where the needs are.
And, John?
Yeah, just a comment. With all due respect to my colleagues, and I appreciate, Bill, you outlining the situation, and I'm all for, you know, that type of lobbying to fight tooth and nail, to continue whatever grants that we have, and to try to extend them, but I appreciate that you guys don't have the luxury of saying, woe is me, and you're making it happen, and please continue to make it happen, and working with both the state and federal folks to continue to make it happen, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Awesome. I just want to speak for Dr. Parkinson on the Director of Health in Physical Education and Wellness, that has been Nancy's request for three years now. Dr. Parkinson and I, and Charlie and a few other folks were at the wellness meeting yesterday, and he's really sorry he couldn't be here this evening, but had asked me to say a few words, so we emailed them, and if it's okay, I'll read it.
Go for it.
Dear Committee members, as you well know, it is time to deliberate the annual budget. As you do so, I would like you to, I would like you, I would urge you to keep the health and wellness high on your priority list. Specifically, I would like to advocate for the hiring of Health, PE, and Wellness Director. I have learned on the Wellness Committee that while we are an important creation of the wellness priority, the best possible priorities are of no good without implantation. This requires daily oversight, something that only a person with a dedicated position can do. I also believe that the Connect program is worthy of a recipient of extra help. I can attest that the explosion of the opiate crisis has made the well-being of our youngest students a real struggle. Taking good care of these children will benefit all students. As you well know, health and wellness is an investment, we can attest that the investments we make to our own preventative care pays dividends in a way down the road. I thank you for your continued support of our children's health, sincerely with apologies for not being able to deliver this message personally, Dr. Parkinson.
Thank you for relating that.
So, I would, if I may, could I speak my own?
Please.
In there? For obvious reasons, I continue to support the Director of Health, PE, and Wellness. It is an investment, it is extraordinarily important to take care of ourselves and our smallest learners moving forward, teaching them a good foundation as to good choices with our bodies, with our minds, with moving our bodies physically, and we need somebody to help advocate for this and help enforce the policy that we have on it. I have supported Superintendent Taylor for the last few years on this, and I strongly support it this year, I think it would really serve our district well. I'm a parent of the East Falmouth 52%, excuse me, yes, 52% free and reduced lunch, I see it every day, and I, I couldn't agree more that I think that having somebody in this position would help break the cycle of a lot of this multi-generational unfortunate that we see daily. that we see daily. So I continue to support this decision. I'm sort of piggybacking on Dr. Parkinson's words there, but that's how I feel about that. I know a lot of it rides on the entitlement grants, and I appreciate Leah's questions and Patrick's answers on that because I quite honestly had a little note that I was going to email you about later, so that cleared up a lot. But I couldn't agree, I couldn't strongly suggest more for that position.
Any last questions or comments from the committee? Any public questions or comments from our vast audience? All right, thank you so much for putting that together. So we will officially close the public hearing on the budget and move into our public hearing on school choice for fiscal year 19. Charlie, are you going to lead for us?
As you see in your packets, I provided Superintendent Taylor with our proposed numbers. They are similar to last year's, with the eighth grade for next year being our bubble class, which historically, for the past few years, we've been closing out acceptance of it.
Are there any questions or comments about the school choice numbers for next year?
I have a question. It's not actually around the numbers, but it's about school choice. Now, if there are teachers who teach in our school system and who live in different districts, if they have their children come to our schools, do we get school choice money for that?
They are under school choice. Correct.
Okay, so their districts provide the school choice?
Yep.
Okay. Is that it? Any other questions about school choice from the committee? Any comments or questions from the audience about school choice? Well, that was... Oh, Terry, I can see you, I'm so sorry.
I'm used to it. So, do we still do publicizing on the radio and things like that? Is that...
Yeah, we're waiting to launch a commercial to, we're waiting for your decision before we launch a commercial.
What decision?
When we approve the school choice.
Oh, as soon as we approve this?
Then Ryan's getting to it.
We actually, so we will, at our next meeting on, because this is just our public hearing for this, so we won't act on it until our next meeting, the 27th. And we'll also act on the budget at that same meeting. So once we act on the numbers, then they do their thing.
And you know how we had the chart of what other local schools per people spending is? John's correct. It's good if you have a gauge around a committee. The Cape, our community, how do we compare? Do you know, Patrick?
Yeah, we're...
What other districts?
We win.
No, no, I mean, price-wise, do we, how do we?
So the school choice numbers, it's another thing that the state sets. It's a flat number related to school choice. It's not something that, we don't have the ability to negotiate a number on what the incoming cost is. The state just sends the money based upon where the kids are. Does that answer your question?
So does the rate come from the sending school, then?
The rate comes from the state.
The state.
It's a flat rate across it.
So if Falmouth kids go to Barnstable or Barnstable kids go to Falmouth, the same amount of money?
Do you know what the rate is?
It averages about, it tends to average about $50, $5,500 when you take into consideration some of the variables.
Was that your question, or was it whether or not we bring in more than, or bring in more students?
No, I just was thinking about the statistics, comparing them to other things. That was already mentioned today, so no, that wasn't part of my question. But it's just good to have a handle on...
Yeah.
Other than like the Nauset region, which has about 300 kids who opt in for school choice, I think Falmouth may be second across the southeastern Massachusetts.
Good.
Who's Ashwood?
I had a question about attendance as it relates to school choice. It's my understanding that the attendance policy is not the same for school choice as it is for Falmouth residents. And I think there are a few instances where school choice students don't have the attendance rates that we're hoping to achieve. So I'm wondering if we could review them.
That's a really good question.
Is it a transportation issue that gets in the way of the attendance? Because we do not provide any transportation for school choice. And sometimes, that has become a problem with parents getting their kids to Falmouth.
Can I follow up with that? I think that'd be really interesting to know the data, if that is, if that's a trend of, yeah, school choice students.
A third of the school choice students at Mullen Hall have attendance rates that we would want to be better.
That's a lot. That's a lot. And alarming.
So I understand procedurally, you say yes to a student, and I understand there's agreements for a family. But attendance has been, you know, a major focus. So just something to consider.
So following up on that, if, however, we need to bring that back to a conversation where we actually look at numbers for different schools as well, whether or not that's truly an issue? Because in the presentation that John and I sat in on Friday, chronic absenteeism is now going to be one of the things that we're evaluated on as a district. And we don't want to be setting ourselves, we don't want to say no to kids who want to come here, but we also don't want to be setting ourselves up for a bad situation for everyone. Because if the kid is missing school, it's bad for them. And if, you know, they're chronically absent, they obviously are not getting educated, and it's affecting us as well, so.
But I'm concerned that, about the attendance issue being different for school choice kids than for Falmouth kids. I'm not sure that that's accurate in terms of a policy piece.
So can we send that to policy to look at that?
We've looked at that in policy, in attendance, and we don't differentiate.
I don't remember anything in it.
We don't either.
No. We don't differentiate between the two, whether you're a school choice child or a Falmouth resident.
Should not matter.
Attendance is attendance. If you're coming to Falmouth Public Schools, this is what we require of you.
We have a policy, you're a Falmouth Public School student now.
Correct. In our, as far as policy is concerned, in our eyes, that's how we view it. So maybe we should, because we are now being evaluated from that, on that from the state, maybe we should have that as a bullet on the application?
I don't know. I think there's two pieces.
Our policy.
So if, however the policy information is trickling down, making sure that that message is actually accurate, and then revisiting our actual attendance on school choice and see how we're doing. John?
I get it that it might not show up in a form or something, but I have a lot of respect for our team, and I have no doubt that the information's accurate because you have the anecdotal institution where you know the kids who are coming in. And I have no doubt that the information's accurate, but I do think we should move forward.
Yeah, I'm just curious if it's just, whether or not it's all our schools, is basically what I'm wondering. Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other comments or questions on school choice? So we'll close the public hearing on school choice, and like I said, we will be acting on school choice numbers and acting on the budget in our next meeting on the 23rd. Next up is our surplus vehicles.
In your packet, you'll see a memo from Patrick Murphy about 2004 Crown Victoria, with 222,572 miles.
Approximately.
On it?
Yes.
And he's asking that you declare it a surplus.
I think she's done us well.
Well-served by this.
I'll make a motion to declare the 2004 Ford Crown Victoria surplus.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Melissa, all in favor declaring this wonderful car surplus? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
What are we going to do with her? Are we going to donate her?
Don't do sealed bid or whatever?
Get a tax write-off from Cape Cod Health Care?
Yeah, so don't talk bad about old Betsy.
Clearly, that's, that car was made on a good day in the factory, and it's still kicking.
We're going to, we're going to get a sealed bid.
I'm sure you'll get some money for...
Yeah, I'm sure. All right, so next is, oh, I missed it.
You're going to give the new superintendent the vehicle?
We're going to be broad in that statement in our contract.
That'll be written in, your retirement.
Give me a nice planter. Right out in front of the admin building.
How the public schools could have a car in the demolition derby in the fair.
Oh, my lands. Okay, moving on. Routine business, the minutes from the January 23rd meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 23rd meeting.
Second.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Leah. Any questions, comments?
Well, I actually have to comment that I had the flu when I was home and I was watching on the television, and I have to commend Ryan on doing such a great job. And I have to say that in my absence, jeez, you guys went forever.
We did.
I got to move it along, so let's keep moving.
It was a long meeting.
Let's keep moving tonight for the folks at home.
We still wanted to hear absolutely everything that Nana Omar could tell us about Nigeria.
She was fascinating.
She was amazing. Absolutely amazing. Any other questions, changes, comments? All in favor of approving the minutes from the 23rd? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, unanimous. Report from the superintendent.
I just have a couple of quick things. Falmouth Public Schools and the YMCA will host a community forum on Thursday night from 6:00 to 7:00. It's to talk about the summer programming. If you remember, we met in the fall, and we got the ideas from the community, we listened to their needs, and the YMCA has developed a summer program. So we're going to roll that out with them on Thursday night. On March 1st, there'll be a Fields Task Force and Planning Committee forum, and C.D.M. Smith will present at that meeting. I think it's a really important one, and we hope that we get a lot of attendance. You'll see some congratulatory pieces for our all-state musicians, the Scholastic Writing Contest. And we have Isabel Sukie, who won the Gold Key for Poetry. So I congratulate the music department and certainly the English department for their achievements. And then my last piece is Just Remember Soup for the Soul on March 8th. That's a great event.
It really is.
And so I put the flyers in your packets, and I just want to remind you, put them up on your refrigerators, they're, it's a really great event.
Can I just ask a clarification about the Y forum? So it is only for people to hear about what the plan will be, not to actually enroll or anything like that? They're not ready for that?
No, we will not be enrolled.
Okay, I just want to make sure that people don't expect...
It's a follow-up from the fall to, because we got everyone together, I want to say it was October, but I don't remember, to hear what people and parents were thinking about and what their needs were for summer care. And so we listened to that and then went back, and the YMCA came up with the program. And they've met with the directors in the different buildings, and they're going to roll it up on Thursday.
Just in looking at the community forum, is this the only forum for the Fields, the March 1st one?
This will be the third.
This will be the third one, okay. And were they all at 5:00?
I believe so.
Okay. Just wondering if in the future, we can think about maybe later forums, just, I know that's probably a hard time for some people coming out of work at 5:00.
Okay. Any other questions for Nancy? Thank you so much. Sonia, anything you want to highlight?
I just want to call out that, to continue the process that Nancy started with celebrating, we got some additional information about junior and senior southeast, as well as all Cape, with 52 students participating on the first weekend of February in the all-Cape festival hosted at Barnstable. So just wanted to call that out as well, and we'll see what other accolades our students bring.
Thank you. Any questions for Sonia? Zach, anything you want to highlight?
Nothing this week, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I have a question. On your, the last area, the professional development to support academically accelerated learners?
Yes.
And the educators participated in a half-day training session, followed by the onsite coaching in their schools. I'm going to assume this, but I just wanted to ask it out loud. Does this include how to identify the, how to out-of-the-box identify the accelerated learners? Like, there are accelerated learners that are very obvious, and then there are learners that are not so obvious that could be considered accelerated?
Yes, that's part of the training, yeah. Some of the non-typical behaviors that you would see, such as acting out, things like that, may actually be signs that students are not being challenged enough. So they do go over a lot of different ways to identify students.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for asking that. Any other questions for Zach? Thank you so much. Thanks, Zach. Charlie?
Kindergarten registration, the week of March 19th. The flyers and PR will be going out.
I'm glad to see that there are a couple evening...
We added a second evening this year.
I think that's really great. It just makes it so much easier, much like what you just said, makes it easier for families who've got work and a million other things.
Can I ask a question about that? So if parents don't have all of these documents right now, can they still come to start the registration process?
Yep.
So that this shouldn't be a deterrent for a registration? Whatever they have, bring.
Yep.
Great. That's a good point.
I would strongly encourage them to show up and register.
Okay.
And they, they work with them through the summer to make sure that these...
Excellent.
That would be really, depending on their birthday, but it would sort of be difficult, some of them that are, yeah, closer to their fifth birthday, if they're a summer kid, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want to encourage them to not bring all of these things, but at the same time, you certainly don't want people, I wonder if we could figure out a language at the very bottom that says something about, you know, don't let the fact that you're missing one of these things keep you from coming, you know? We'd rather have you than, with not all these things, than not have you come. Because knowing those numbers early is so helpful.
Yeah, maybe it could just be a little asterisk at the end or something.
Yeah. I think that would be, I mean, I'm sure you already made this, and I, you don't want us to be messing with it, but I think it's a fair point because, you know, for those of us who are real rule followers, I wouldn't want to show up without all of these. And I would not show up because I wouldn't have them all.
And it's hard to have all those documents for you.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions for Charlie? Thank you so much. Cindy couldn't be here tonight, but we have her briefing, and I thought these were like the cutest thing I ever saw.
They're great.
They're so adorable.
Yeah. Can I make a comment on this?
Yeah, please.
Just in looking at the school libraries and the FEF grant about windows and mirrors, and what a, what a great experience that is for children and for adults to experience of when you're reading a book and you make that connection with what the book's about, that that is actually reflected in your own life. But there's also books that you read where you actually get to go into somebody else's shoes. And this idea of window and mirrors and bringing this into our libraries is awesome. And that reflects on kind of this student work here of thinking about what are our differences and what are the ways that we're similar.
I loved getting these a few weeks ago when they came home. They might still be on the fridge because I thought they were so sweet and so honest.
It's just so simple.
Yeah.
We're both boys. We have different religions. It's just like, so what? We're both humans. It's just so, so, so sweet. I just love it. Any other questions? Oh, no, we can't have questions because we're here, sorry. Comments? Joannie, is there anything you wanted to highlight from your...
We continue moving forward with the human resources priorities, and we're heavy in supporting supervisors and directors in the area of wellness and educators in the area of securing licensure and renewing SEI endorsements. Also, our background checks, making sure that we are up to date on all of the background checks for safety. So we're heavy in the, supporting the individual employee mode right now in HR.
Any questions for Joannie? Thank you so much. Patrick, you have a whole page even though you had to help with the budget presentation. Anything you want to highlight?
No, I just wanted to thank Kelly and John for attending the Legislative Breakfast and the DESI presentation. I thought that was important. And then the two other opportunities moving forward are the March 9th Poverty Summit in Worcester, that's a second-year event, and the commissioner is speaking at that event. And then the April 25th Day on the Hill. And then the April 25th Day on the Hill is also a terrific event. So if folks have the ability to put those in your schedules, I think they'll be... You'll be well served.
I think I saw an email that someone going to Andrea.
I don't know who was talking about it.
Andrea, right.
I'm just wondering, Patrick, if you could put a little plug in to make these more able for people who are working during the day, these events.
No, I know.
We were talking about that.
It's super difficult and as much as I want to be part of these events, you know, doing a breakfast when I need to go to work is hard.
Yeah.
They are well-attended. They are well-attended, so...
But I do think, yeah, I mean, people, you know, we're taking a day off of work to go, which is hard.
Yeah, it would be great if maybe they could alternate, I mean, maybe every other year.
I think the Region 7 events tend to be in the evenings. So I'm not sure when the next one is, but those are definitely evening meetings.
Part of it might be impacted because the legislators are coming down from Boston and then we're in the Cape versus they'd have to stay over if it was at, you know, 7, 8 o'clock.
Yeah, or even if occasionally they are. Melissa?
Patrick, are you going to either the 9th or the 25th?
I am... It's... They're on my calendar. I play them by ear.
Good enough.
I think we're sending Sonia to the Poverty Summit, though.
Oh, great. You're going, okay.
So if not, if the... Hopefully a school committee member or two will make it, but if not, well, at least hear about it.
You know, there's something that struck me right now, so just for future reference. When we have these events and we know there's only one person going, you know, maybe we could get questions together that we might have to kind of marshal that person, you know, just a thought, you know?
Certainly for the school committee because I would... And I didn't... I just didn't think to tell anyone that I was going on Friday. I didn't either, I know, but maybe now it'll plant the seed that we should check in if there are things that you'd like to know.
Yeah, and with that, maybe it's bringing back information too for the school committee too and sharing that information. And maybe you could do a little... Whoever goes to the event, just do a little share at the end with the information.
So John, can you share when we get to the end?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. No, it's a really good point. We wanna make the most of all of that. Any other questions for Patrick? Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Oh, that's it. Look at that, just like that. I know. So let's... But let's jump a little bit ahead so that we can cover committee reports. And we'll just take this out of order. Are there any... Melissa, did you wanna report back anything else from wellness or...
Stand by, please.
Sure. Were there any other committees that have updates?
Just wellness, we did... I found it... I found it to be a really exciting meeting yesterday. There were a lot of really good points that came out of it. The island-grown schools program, the Martha's Vineyard program. They have a culinary arts program that's... They grow and then it goes into their school. That's one bullet point that kind of sticks out. Of course, the health and wellness policy. We have a policy currently that is great. Our current policy is great, but we don't really have anyone to help execute and enforce that. Hence my plug for the budget on that department head. Screen time continues to be an issue. The two things... The top two things that we sort of took away yesterday was nutrition being number one, hoping to get a salad bar. And food-free celebrations, there was much discussion surrounding that on both sides, so...
Thank you.
That was an exciting meeting.
Could I just add about the wellness? So I think too, as far as the wellness, physical education director part, I think I get the general impression that people who are already in those roles, they're really wanting someone to help them and wanna be on the same page as other schools and have some unity. And so I really got that vibe from them, that they just kind of want somebody up there to go to, to help kind of direct them. And so I think it would be... Obviously, I know you've tried to make it happen. I know it's not that issue, but just for them, I think it would be something that they really need.
They also need an advocate at the table. They do. All of the other departments have that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they're a department.
And to have unity across the district with what we're teaching them.
Yeah. Well, and it feels, if you don't have an advocate at the table, it feels like it's not as important. And we're spending all of our time talking about how important it is. So, yeah, they need to feel that. Any other committees, Leah?
So Sonia and Terry and Melissa, I might need your help on this, thinking about our policy subcommittee meeting. I know we went over our homeschool policy and we're really revamping that. So it becomes much more of a policy instead of the procedures. And having the procedures be a separate document, which is that application document. Am I saying everything that needs to be said about that?
Yes.
I am, okay. One interesting fact that I found out about homeschool, and actually you guys can clarify this for me, is that we actually don't get funds for those students. Is that right? So they're not...
For homeschool?
For homeschool students, even though they come in, they can come and use our extracurricular. Or our...
They're eligible.
They're eligible to come into our schools to participate into our electives and things like that. But we don't actually get funds for them. Is that correct, Patrick?
And it's nowadays, it's even... It used to be effectively hold harmless on that, but nowadays since more and more online programs are marketing towards homeschool students, there's a cost, there can be a cost associated with it, which has changed the dynamic significantly over the last, I don't know, five or six years.
So what... Just to clarify what I'm saying is that they're... They don't count in our numbers when we're doing our per pupil rate. So that's... Which I just found out, which I thought was interesting. It's not really related to policy, but it's going with the homeschool piece, so...
It's a good idea. I was thinking, hey, we could say, hey, there's like a thousand kids that are homeschooled.
Look at how low our numbers are.
It's interesting because we do provide services. So, you know, I think it's something to consider when we meet with legislators and things to talk about that piece, so...
Any other committees? Any requests for follow-up information or future agenda items?
Well, the committee is gonna talk about that.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, John. I even asked you and then I forgot.
No, so, yeah, wearing my collaborative hat, especially with Chris Bogdan and Patty Grenier here as well. So as far as, we had that breakfast the other day, the Legislative Breakfast. Now, for everybody that, you know, we get into the acronyms of DESI and it's just the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for folks that, you know, aren't aware of that. I mean, I know you guys aren't, but for anybody that's watching. We had Erica Gonzalez from the Data and Accountability Division of DESI who presented. And it was very interesting with regards to how the districts are gonna be broken up versus, you know, I know of late, the, you know, ranking discussions has been of a discussion. And I'm a little premature in saying, you know, what may be down the road. But down the road, that dynamic of the structure of that, the numerical structure of that, it all likelihood will be changing. So it would be more of a breakdown of calculating and differentiation and things of that nature. And then with regards to individual schools, it wouldn't so much be school to school to school. And then based on what the lowest ranking school within the district would be, it would be a collection of all the kids within all of the different schools. And then what they would figure what the rankings would be in that. And Kelly was correct in saying one of the dynamics was gonna be absenteeism. And somebody up Cape brought up an example, which was a very interesting one, which will be something that will be discussed of folks that have kids that go away back to a different country for X number of months and then they kind of, and then they come back. And then how will that affect it? And then are they considered, is that a long-term absence? And the nuances of what will be considered a long-term absence or what won't is some of the things that they're working through. But I think overall, it'll be something that'll be an accurate depiction of what's happening and will be good overall situation. But we'll get feedback and whatever it is, it is, we'll work with it. And as you guys are making it happen, we'll make it happen with whatever they put forth.
Exactly.
But that's what I'm saying.
It was very informative. It was a lot of information, for sure. And it was a really nice presentation. Any other requests for agenda items or follow-up information?
Just, we'd like to see the school choice numbers on absenteeism.
And we will... Our next meeting is the 23rd, where we'll act on the budget and those school choice numbers. And I, of course, forgot that lovely chart that Sharon made for me where I could tell you where all the meetings were between now and then, but I don't have it. My apologies. My apologies, Sharon. You made it for me and then I forgot it. So I had... Did I interrupt you again?
No, but actually Leah said what I was gonna talk about on that. But what John was saying with the acronyms and everything, maybe some little segment of a future meeting, we could show, for example, how the D E S E arrives at pure pupil spending, especially when... Oh.
That's a tough...
Well, okay, maybe something else. But, no, because the public doesn't get it, you know? I just said they... The public, we don't get it sometimes because the D E S E form is... But they impact so many things that we do that, you know, and the public's not aware that these are things out of our control. You know, why do you have to spend more money than a town like Barnsville, for example? When they look at just the figure, they don't understand. So maybe if some thing that they... Some formula that might help the public understand.
Kelly, Terry, you know, jogged something in my mind too. The other dynamic of the event, which was great too, was having all the legislators there too. And getting to understand, and for me personally, like you just said, Terry, for me to personally understand that the DESI folks are working through, you know, how are they gonna measure all this stuff, 'cause it's not an exact science, but they stretch. And then to see budgetary-wise how that was working with the legislators. And then how... And I was very impressed, and I'm sure you were, Kelly, too, with the unification even across the party lines of our Cape legislators. And Vinnie DiMascio too as well, who's off Cape, but spends a lot of time on Cape too, of that they're working in arm-in-arm with saying, okay, how do we get this? And they really... I would suggest too that we, if we do have something and they were lobbying for folks to, you know, put forth, if you have something that we're working on, to have them help us, help, you know, them type thing, help them, help us.
Right, yeah.
I know Tom Cruise said it in Jerry Maguire. I forgot what it was. Help me, help you.
Exactly. So Nancy and I had talked about the agenda prior to tonight that there's no real reason for us to keep all of our lovely people when we're only gonna be talking about the executive search from here on out. So feel free to go home, go to bed. Thank you so much.
We're an hour early. It's awesome.
It's 'cause John's here. We're an hour early.
Moving, moving, moving.
Chris, do you and Patty wanna come up? Unfortunately, there's no chair. I guess you're gonna have to roll up your own chair. Sorry about that, so that we can hear you. So it's still certainly a public session, but, you know, it's not a great use of their time 'cause they unfortunately don't have any input on this. Oh, sorry. Did you guys wanna introduce yourselves or do you want me to introduce you? What would you like? So this is, as John already said, Chris Bogdan and Patty Grenier.
Nice to meet you finally, Persa.
From the Collaborative, from the Executive Search, people who are... Who I've been working with a lot in putting together the different pieces of the timeline and getting the job posted and what the posting was gonna look like and every detail in between. And Chris offered to come tonight and walk us through the timeline itself and why the pieces, all these pieces exist, why they're lining up the way that they are, how we should be sort of approaching this. And how was that? Is that accurate?
That was great. That was great.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me send these around for people who... I did bring copies.
Thank you.
Do you want a beer, guy? Any cigarettes?
Do you see my struggle and I was trying to...
All right, take it away.
Well, thank you very much for having us both this evening and selecting the Collaborative to assist you in your superintendent search. It is arguably the first and foremost responsibility of a school committee in Massachusetts to hire, evaluate, and hopefully never have to, but, you know, dismiss a superintendent. I would ask you, when you approach this responsibility and this challenge before you, that we all kind of know what a superintendent is and what a superintendent does. But if you looked at the position generically and you asked anyone on the street or in a restaurant or a neighbor of yours and said, you know, how would you go about hiring a CEO who ran an organization with a $46 million annual budget, whose business owned hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of real estate, who employed 650 people? And you entrusted the community's most cherished resources to most of the year and the better part of the day of that year. It's an incredible responsibility. The term superintendent doesn't cover it. So you really, you really need to keep that in mind as you move forward on the search and you put the process together. It is a profound responsibility, a profound responsibility. And it is a most challenging position for anyone to assume. So I would, I would ask you to think about that. And it statutorily is yours to do. You're responsible. In the past, and all school committees and school boards do it, they include a lot of people because it is a very public position, obviously. And inclusivity in the process is critically important. But the final decision is yours. The responsibility is yours. And it is a huge responsibility to shoulder, not only in the search, but moving forward. So understanding that, I hope you're suitably, you know, scared and anxious about it because it is all of that. It is all of that. When you choose the right person, it can be a wonderful marriage of sorts that can move your district in the direction that you want it to move, which is to provide a better learning experience for all your children. But at this point, it's a lot of questions. One of your challenges, besides the obvious, is that you have, and Kelly and I have talked a considerable amount of time about the search. It's an expedited search. In the search game for superintendents, generally you would want to start earlier in the school year. Many districts start in November to post positions with a identification date of around the 1st of April for a final candidate. You are starting essentially, I think we originally had posted this, or first time posting an announcement of this was at the end of January. You're gonna be closing in March. And we have a very aggressive timeline so that you too can appoint right around the 1st of April so that you are in the hunt for candidates who are looking at this time and hoping to assume a new position for July 1. All of that being said, I don't know how much time you have had to look at this. But the timeline before you, the proposed timeline, again, we are at the meeting of February 13th. And what I have suggested to Kelly is that you identify a subcommittee of the board that she can work with in terms of moving and assisting in this timeline. The next critical date becomes interview committee selection. Now, this is the interview of semifinalists. We will be gathering and reviewing and checking and speaking with applicants all through the application process, or application month, I would say, which is this month. I can tell you right now, there are approximately six people who have submitted their material. who have submitted their materials. But it's very early in the month and they come rolling in fast and furious in the last week and even the last day. So, you'll be selecting an interview committee. And here's where you begin the process of including voices, important voices, I would argue, key voices in the process. That, because the interview committee of semifinalists narrows it down to three final candidates. The interview committee, if you go to your other piece of paper, what we are recommending would be that you have a couple of school committee members on it. You have a group that works with the district, the volunteers in public schools. PTA or school council, parent, parent of a special needs student, faculty member, school administrator, town government representative, teachers association president or leader. You want, you want inclusivity, but you want key players. You want people who the superintendent, the new superintendent, will be engaging with as they pursue their position and responsibilities. One of the things that I tell interview committees is that your charge is to recommend finalists, hopefully three out of the pool that you interview. And you should be very comfortable with the notion of supporting any one of those three people should they be selected by the school committee as the new superintendent. And you should be comfortable serving as a resource for that new person when they come onboard so that you can acquaint them with the district and how you engage with the district and how you hope to engage with them. There are obviously common goals, no matter how factious relationships may get, you know, at times between constituent groups, whether it's labor associations or parent groups or whatever. But these are people that have a vested interest in the district and in the success of the superintendent because a superintendent's success is really part of the district's success. They participate in the selection of finalists, but they also provide credible testimony to the process outside in the community, particularly that part of the community that they're intimately involved with. So, it's really important that, you know, the person representing the select board, for example, can go back to the select board and when asked about, well, what's the process like? They can honestly say, hey, it's a very thoughtful and conscientious process that the board has put together. And, you know, it was time-consuming, but well worth, you know, the time that I invested. And you want all those people to be able to say that because that spreads out into your community. And it just, it gives you credibility. It gives the final selection, you know, the support that it needs to be successful moving forward.
Chris, could I add just one thing?
Sure.
That the people who are on the search committee as well, on the interview committee as well, represent Falmouth to the candidate. And that's another piece with 46 openings in the state of Massachusetts right now. Candidates are also interviewing the communities to see if it's a good fit for them. So, when you're choosing people to represent on the interview committee, you want people who represent Falmouth well and engage with the superintendent candidates in a way that entices them and really motivates them to want to come here. That's an important piece added to the other important pieces that Chris stated.
Yes, it's, you know, it's underscore. You are, you're in a horse race. You're in a competition for the best candidates. There are many, many openings and not nearly as large a pool of qualified candidates as you might imagine. So, you're competing for, for high-quality people.
Did you say 46? 46 superintendent positions out there right now? In Massachusetts?
Yes.
But how many are at the beach? I don't know.
I mean, that's gotta be...
How many get old, sexy? It's probably there. Sorry. We tend to get all...
Well, all right. Remember to bring that up.
The real strength of our school system is our committee.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're the largest on the Cape, even bigger than Barnstable. And we do, people who watch us have to see how well-oiled a machine we are.
Yeah.
I mean, not to pump our own...
But it's true.
But it is true. I mean, so, if people were to check around about the relationships, even if you just read the Cape papers and follow through the years of the relationships or not-relationships in other counties.
The lack of news. The lack of drama.
Yeah. So, how would you recommend? I mean, I've been kind of joking about how we present, but how would you recommend? Or candidates probably already know to look for that, right? Or...
Oh, they should definitely know to look for that. And they will, they will be screening the community. They will be screening the board as, you know, as we screen them, quite frankly. So, yes, your, your reputation as a, you know, thoughtful community and a thoughtful board that does not engage in drama is, is truly important.
Yeah.
Is truly important. You, you also need to talk amongst yourselves about what kind of leader you want. And I'll be, I'll be specific about this. People will come into a district and, you know, to, to be specific, but also to generalize a little bit, what they see, the glass is half-empty or the glass is half-full. You will find candidates and potential superintendents that want to aggressively make you better. It doesn't matter what metrics, you know, they use to measure you. They will believe and they feel important that it's their job to make you a better district than you currently are. And they can pursue that agenda if it's their agenda more aggressively than others. If that's not the kind of person you're looking for, you have to be very clear about that. And not that you have to necessarily say that, although at the appropriate time, I think it is important to say that. But when Patty and I prescreen people and talk to people and vet people, we've got to be able to say what you're looking for because we do not want an aggressive change agent to come to Falmouth. You don't want an aggressive change agent as your superintendent. So, it is, it is important to give this some thought. Truly give this some thought. Because ultimately, you know, you have to work with this person. You have to talk to them about how they would identify an agenda with short and long-term goals. And you at least want to be at a basic level of understanding when they walk in the door that, you know, you either want a lot to happen over the next 12 months or you want them to move slowly and engage in a more, an entry process that allows them to get to know the community and get to, get a sense of what you're about, what the community's about, what the staff is about, what the important things are to focus on, what's good, what needs work. It has to be a thoughtful process and it begins with you. It begins with you. Because you will hear from the community whether they like what goes on. And I'm talking about the community at large, which is also your community of employees. You know, once, once something happens or once somebody perceives that there's a direction that has been charted and they're not happy with it, you're gonna hear about it. You're gonna have to deal with it. And hopefully you can be, you know, genuinely supportive when you have to ultimately defend one action or another, one direction or another. The next group of dates speak to focus groups.
Chris, let me ask a question. The, of the 46, are there, I mean, I could look it up, too, as well, but just are there any kind of geographic clumps to that? And do we have, are there other ones that are on the Cape? You know, I mean, are a lot of them around the city of Austin?
I, you know, I think they, they cover the state pretty much. There's, there's not a lot happening.
The closest that I can think of, there's nothing on Cape. Taunton, Fall River, New Bedford, Westport are the ones that come quickly to mind.
Fall River is looking for a superintendent. Interesting.
Yes.
Now, would there be just, would there be just a...
I think.
They just got, they just hired it.
Is that Matt?
Yeah, Matt.
No, it's New Bedford.
Alone.
New Bedford. Thank you for checking me on that. And they do go to the, from the north shore to the western part of the state to central Mass. Chris is right. They spread. But the, it's Taunton and...
New Bedford.
New Bedford, thank you.
Not Fall River.
And, and not Fall River. And Westport is the closest one, sort of kind of community. Which, I laughed when you said, is there something at the beach? I thought, yeah, well, well, Westport's at the beach.
Now, the other question would be, from a geographic standpoint, for folks to, you know, we'd have a component where if they wanted to move and then we factor that sort of thing in. But is there a hard and fast rule? I mean, nothing's hard and fast, but is there sort of like a circumference that you'd say, okay, this is as far as I think someone that would commit to the area would make sense? You know, I mean, as somebody's deciding type thing?
I, you know, I would, I would hope that someone would want to get close. My sense is that you want a very visible person in your community. I wouldn't require a superintendent to live in the community, but to get pretty close because you want them around. You want them to come to events and the like. And I remember when I was a superintendent and I had kids and the second thing that they said to me every morning is, do you have a meeting tonight, Dad? So, it's, it's a whole lot easier to go to those meetings if you can get home for dinner and then go to the meeting and then come home before bedtime, you know, type of thing. But at the same time, it's, it's nice to have a little bit of distance so that you're not accosted in the grocery store on Sunday afternoon.
Sure, Nancy would have something to say about that.
Or that, you know, you can walk around in your sweat clothes, you know, or go to the beach in your baggy bathing suit, you know, or the case may be without being accosted. So, yeah, that's what you want to think about. And, and if you, if you truly want to be competitive, you have to think about, you know, committing to helping in the move. You know, I mean, moving costs, I'm not, I'm not suggesting housing costs or, or that, but moving costs. If somebody was coming, you'd like somebody from, you know, the Worcester area or something like that. Or even, even, you know, the greater Boston area. That's a hike. It's a hike. It's not, you know, it's a few thousand dollars. I mean, you can obviously check on it, but it will assist you in, in attracting someone to the area.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, the focus groups, generally speaking, in a search that takes much more time, over, let's say, five months as opposed to three months, focus groups come early. And you're, you're still legitimately using focus groups because the focus groups are informing you. The information is gleaned from those focus groups. It's not too late to take that information honestly and inform your decision-making.
And you facilitate those focus groups?
Yes. But what, what I have suggested to Kelly is I will happily facilitate the discussion, but to have a board member there recording, usually put things up on, you know, flip charts and paper and whatnot, but to have that up there and a board member recording and being able to report back to you that this was particularly well-attended and these were the issues that, you know, were identified and the qualities characteristics were identified, that, you know, you have that information because someone could come in and say, well, you're, you know, the cart's way before the horse here. And generally speaking, in terms of timelines, that's true. But how the information is used, again, to inform your decision-making, it doesn't matter when it happens.
So, that was why I was sending emails asking people about their availability for dates without telling you what any of the dates were for because I didn't, we didn't know if this was, timeline was even gonna be approved tonight. But I just wanted to see if, as we laid it out, whether or not people could be there. That was, thank you for being patient with my cryptic emails, but that's why, to make sure.
I figured it out.
You did?
I didn't know which committees, but I knew what you were about.
I could not figure it out. Hence, my email back to you. So, we...
Because we did have the timeline to look at, too.
You did. Yeah.
The, the search will close on the 2nd of March. Between now and the 2nd of March, as applications come in, we will be identifying and beginning to vet people who meet the qualifications for the position. Those that I anticipate are potential semifinalist candidates, either Patty or I will contact them and meet with them if we don't know them already and, and talk to them about the position, talk to them about the district. We'll sell, we'll sell the position. That's why it's important for us to know. We know you have a beach. I'm not sure it's as nice as some of the other beaches. I'll say that it's their nicest beaches going, but...
Well, that's a fact.
Pardon me?
That's a fact.
I know. I was, I was only teasing. Don't hold that against me. But we will, we will be selling the position and selling the district. And, and that's the important things about the district. Not just that you happen to be, you know, located where you are geographically located, but that you have a thoughtful and easy-to-work-with board. You know, the, what superintendents say about their jobs, okay, to be perfectly honest with you, is the biggest part of the job is care and feeding of the board, okay? That the relationship that they develop with a board is the most critical relationship that they will develop as a superintendent. And the last thing that the superintendents say is that, you know, superintendents always leave their jobs for health reasons. And it's because they get sick of the board or the board gets sick of them. That's just what's out there. So, you're absolutely right, Terry, in saying that it's important to have a good reputation as a board. A board that, you know, can get through a meeting quickly, that knows how to proceed, you know, thoughtfully through important...
Thank God John's here.
Quickly.
Thank God John's here.
But understands also what's important.
Yeah.
What's important. And, and how to deal with issues that come to your attention that probably should be addressed by other people way down the organization before you begin to comment on them. I mean, it's, it's all simple stuff, but it's stuff you have to remember. And, you know, understanding that you are that part, that kind of a board will make it that much easier to sell yours and distinguish you from other jobs out there.
And because we're, we're a part, a group of nine, I could see it would be very, that people might hesitate. Like, oh, Lord, I'm, you know, I'm a superintendent with five now. Why would I ever want nine of them? But it's all about the, it's about the people, like the, the way that they function.
And luckily, thanks to Ryan, they...
They can watch us on TV.
Any applicant can go and watch us and see how we interact with each other and the questions we ask. And, and any good superintendent who would be applying for this would...
I would hope they would watch us. John?
I gotta switch gears. In addition to how wonderful we are, the, the, what they really will get is the passionate kids and the passionate staff and the teachers. And just, you know, with the commitment level, like one of our principals, Nancy Ashworth, that's here engaged. And, you know, and that's really the strength of, of the school district.
And there's a reason we have so many staff at the top lane and step because they never want to retire. You know, we've got so many people eligible for retirement and they never want to leave.
I just, I was saying that tongue-in-cheek when it's wonderful.
Aren't we like at least 70%?
Yeah, we have 70% at the top lane.
Yeah.
For our teaching staff.
That's great.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we have the locations for our focus groups? The elementary and the level?
Sharon is working on it because we have to find available spaces.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Okay.
Do you have thoughts? Is there something you want to weigh in?
Well, I'm just thinking that Mallincklay Hall is where we have the biggest number of staff, so that might be a good location. And since Nancy's here...
We just booked it.
Okay.
Oh, okay, great. It was either that or T-Ticken East because they're kind of relatively close. It's not gonna be at North. I'm sorry to all of our North staff. They're gonna have to drive. And then either Morse Pond or Lawrence and the high school. And then the community one will either, we don't know, either Morse, maybe Morse Pond Auditorium, it's a nice venue, or I know they did it once before at the high school library. So, one of those, we just have, yeah.
As we work down the timeline and identify semifinalists, the interview committee will be making a decision as to who to interview as a semifinalist. We will make recommendations based on the paper. I've talked to Kelly about perhaps the subcommittee of the board looking at all the paper that we receive, all the candidate papers we receive. Some, some will be incomplete, some people will not, you know, have the requisite qualifications that you've called for in the application and we would automatically disqualify those folks, but ultimately you will see everything that we get and you will have our recommendations and our comments on, on all the applicants. But the interview committee will decide on which semifinalists will come out of that applicant pool. It is critically important and we want to be able to tell people who apply that they will, as well as all the other applicants' names, will remain absolutely confidential until the finalists are announced. So, no one should know the name of a semifinalist other than members of the board who have seen the paper and/or the interview committee. And they will sign a confidentiality agreement to participate on the interview committee. It is obviously not foolproof. Those confidentiality agreements can be breached, but, you know, we will iterate over and over and over again how truly important it is because a, a sitting superintendent who has no really good reason for leaving their position but is entertained by the notion of coming to Falmouth and living near the beach or and on the Cape and all the good things about Falmouth is not going to jeopardize their position and their standing in their community and in their district with the announcement of a semifinalist position. It won't happen. They'll, they'll withdraw. So, I want to be able to tell people that everything will be confidential. At the same time, we, we will be telling people early on about this timeline and how aggressive it is. And if, you know, we are talking to people that have the potential to become semifinalists, we will tell them, "Hey, look," you know, we'll tell them next week or whenever they apply and whenever we meet with them, "That you have a good chance of being selected as a semifinalist. This closes on March 2nd and the interviews are on the 10th and 11th. Please be available one of those days." Okay? That's how, that's how aggressive this is. And as we go down further and talk about the other pieces of the agenda which tend to fall into place here in the timeline, again, these folks will be notified about the timeline and will know that it is an expedited, compact timeline and that you're interested in pursuing very quickly. And quite frankly, that's okay with them. That's okay with them because the good people who are out there and interviewing at six or seven different places perhaps will be getting multiple offers or the potential of getting multiple offers. So, the sooner that they know, the better.
So, I see that there's a, the finalists will visit Falmouth and we're not doing site visits.
We are definitely recommending that they visit Falmouth, that they would come to Falmouth for a day. They would visit schools, they would visit subgroups. So, for example, um, you know, they would, perhaps you would want them to talk with central office administrators, a group of principals, you know, just for a half hour, 45 minutes just so they can engage and people can get a sense of what they're about and who they are and that they only have one head and, you know, things like that. That they visit the schools, they see your facilities and the like. You put together a day and a board member, you know, generally will tour them around. I don't see a whole lot of value in, um, visiting someone's school district. I don't know what you're going to find. It's an investment of time and energy. They're sometimes tough to schedule. They could screw up your timeline mightily. And if, if you absolutely positively, you know, wanted to do a visit of someone's district, assuming they had a district for you to visit, um, that you pick one. You know, if you can narrow it down to your first choice and get some kind of agreement that this is essentially a way to confirm what you already believe and feel about, you know, the candidate, that you do that as opposed to three.
I was going to say, but that shows one's hand. And it isn't quite fair. I mean, so if we're going to do it, I would think you would do three, no more than three, but...
Do all your finalists.
Yeah, do all, do three, the three semifinalists if we did do a site visit. But, you know, I've gone on those site visits and you wonder, "How prompted are the people?" How, you know, I mean, what, how do you feel? But you, you can, you really can't read between the lines. You think you can, but you can't. I don't know, how do you feel?
Well, I, I, I don't particularly care for them. I, you know, I think they can be, I mean, you, the candidate can pick who you're going to talk to. I mean, they're going to set it up, so are they going to give you their worst critic? Are you going to, you know, be in a position to find that out if that's what you're looking for? I sort of doubt it. You'll find out about the candidate through the vetting process. You'll, you'll have a much better idea of, of what their relationships are in the district if, you know, we start talking to people or you might call a board member or whatnot and, you know, if this is wide open like that. That's, I think that works better and in terms of timeline, it makes it go quicker. And particularly if you've got, if you're, if you're with a candidate who's a finalist, say a finalist in two other searches, they've got to schedule perhaps, you know, three visits to the district. That's my opinion.
Sorry, Melissa then, John?
Uh, my only thought was people can look outstanding on paper and they, you know, I appreciate you saying that, um, you know, you get a, a sense of who they are by the interview process. But then I, all I can think of is, you know, how prompted are the people and how prompted are things? And then maybe when you go and visit the campus and take a walk off-campus to go to the local coffee shop and they are speaking freely, that yes, that candidate is being, you know, talked up to, yes, they're great, they're wonderful, but in reality, they're just trying to make them look good to move them on. So, that is...
In that case, would they tell us at all if they want to get rid of them?
Well, if you ask people that aren't...
Oh, that aren't in the, in the, just commuting them.
Just commuting, so that was just my only thought on that. But we can think about that later.
Yeah.
Or not, or whatever, that was just my only thought.
Yeah, John, do you have a thought?
Yeah, just, um, having taken over several hotels in the last 10 years and going in and really physically walking the, the facility or even just walking around the facility. And then even just doing that in the course of, of being in general management, walking daily and running the whole thing is to, um, it tells you a lot of the story. I think with regards to the, the side of it of walking and meeting with people, I can see just forgetting about that. I can absolutely see where you're coming from, Chris. Um, the, the security aspect of it in the different schools, you know, that you'd have to clearly identify yourself. The side of tipping your hand, that and tipping that person's hand. If that's, you know, we needed to be up, we need to be upfront in the process and if that's one of the components, it might scare some folks away. Whereas, whereas if we're just literally driving by the property or walking circumnavigating each build or somebody's just driving by just to see. So, then we don't hire somebody and then know, "Hey, wait a minute, there's a big, you know, 16-foot gaping hole in the side of the building of the high school. That would be nice to know what the heck that was." Or something that's just really egregious about the property being in disrepair and weeds up and you just say, "Wait, is that how I would want my high school to look?" So, I think we'd get a lot of benefit, benefit just from like a drive-by of the different buildings.
Than actually trying to schedule and meet and...
In addition, of course, vetting and then researching and all that stuff and checking and...
Right, right.
So, how much flexibility do we have with this? If, if it seems like we need some more information, I'm saying "we" as the interview committee, not me. But as the interview committee, they want some more information, could they then say, "We'd like to do site visits"? Would they have the ability to do that?
Well, we're in charge of this timeline, so if we feel like we don't have enough information to make a good decision, we can just change it.
But would that be the interview committee that would then tell us that they'd like to change it? How would that work?
The, the people who would do site visits, if you're going to do site visits, are board members. You would either do the board as a whole or a board as a subcommittee, you know, whatever. You, you wouldn't, the interview committee wouldn't do it. The interview committee is going to be a, a first screen for you. And so, they will, it'll be a rather, it'll be a thoughtful but controlled interview that, you know, will be as objective as interviews can possibly be so that everyone is, you know, screened fairly and objectively and responds to the same questions and, you know, the people on the interview committee know what they want to hear in response to those questions and, and the like. So, they narrow it down to three. After that, it's less formal in terms of visits to Falmouth and the schools and the feedback that you may get or we may get from staff or, you know, parents or whoever happens to be in the buildings and, and/or around. And then you will be interviewing the finalists as a board, depending on how you structure that interview. And then we will obviously be gathering information in terms of references, both formal and informal. You may too. I mean, it, it's not something that I would suggest that you aggressively do unless you have a relative or a friend that may live in the same town. You know, what do you know about, you know, the superintendent? They're a finalist, you know, they're a finalist in Falmouth, so forth and so on. But don't go out and, and aggressively, you know, seek information. Stopping in at the coffee shop and asking, you know, without identifying yourself, we can't stop you from doing that. I, I've actually done that as a candidate in a district. I've gone to the coffee shop and just talked about people about the district and so forth and so on.
Where do, where do the site visits usually fall? Is it before the final interview or after?
After.
After. So, then we, then to your point, we would, that's when we would know. "Okay, well, these two are wonderful, maybe we should visit."
Yeah, and I, I kind of look at it as, um, so after they visit Falmouth, kind of if that's, if we still need a little bit more information. I mean, I, I think it would make me feel most comfortable if we put in a possible site visit into this timeline before we're interviewing the finalists. Just, and I know it's like so tight, but just so we have it in there, just in case we need it. Because we might, you know, there might be some information that we're just questioning how they're actually leading within their own district right now. And we want to send some board members to go observe that.
You'd want to interview them first. Interview them first and then, and then, yes. And then do the site visit. You may, you may find out right away that there's just no chemistry there.
I, I agree. And there, there might be a way for you to get a little bit more information when they come here. It's up to the board, but when I ran the NOSIT search, one of the things that I did do, which is I held, I organized, um, a community time, a teacher, a faculty time and an administrative leadership team time. And each candidate met with those groups. And with the teacher time and the community time, I had encouraged the school committee members to sit in on the candidate presenting at those times. And you do get a real flavor and people randomly ask the candidates questions. So, it wasn't scripted, it was people asking them questions. So, I think you might get an opportunity to see them in another way before you interview them on March 22nd. So, you may feel, "Jeez, I've, I've gotten more of a sense of who they are." We can facilitate that in different ways. How the site visit works, we can advise you certainly, but you, you may have a desire to have a certain format.
So, okay, so now, like seeing that they're, they're visiting Falmouth the 15th to 19th, now, why couldn't that also be when they're getting interviewed?
By whom?
By us?
By us. So, kind of piggybacking that on the interview, so then they're not coming again on the 22nd.
You, you can do that if you'd like. I can just tell you, makes for a very long day for the...
I was going to think, no, 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 they need to go home and mull things over. I would definitely think. I wouldn't have them come and visit and interview them on the same day.
I agree with her.
They need to go home and, they need to let it filter into them and what they've learned and everything. You can't...
Turn it around.
You can't turn it around that fast, I don't think.
The 15th, the 19th is over a weekend as well.
Yeah.
Just tossing that out there.
Also, you might think there's some questions that you may want to ask them based on their...
Based on their visit?
Yeah.
That's great.
That we would have time to mull it over? And also, if, if we are going to, I imagine some type of structured something in those visits, whether it's sitting down with the administrators or, or teachers or whatever it is and that some of us would need to be part of that. We would need to be sitting in. So, then it would also be three giant, potentially three giant interviews on top of all of that for us as well. It would be a huge commitment. Because those would be during the day, right? Those visits, they're not going to be in the evening.
Yeah. But the interview could be in the evening.
The interviews will be in the evening.
Falmouth.
Pardon me?
Unless they'd like to stay in Falmouth for the weekend.
Or unless our candidates are all internal, then we won't be going anywhere.
A component, I know we're talking about the beach and everything, a component and all, all things aside, I think would actually be a beneficial thing if candidates wanted to. I could set up where they could have access to the folks of the Chamber of Commerce to, if they had any questions, you know, because they can just answer quick answers about any, all kinds of things related to Falmouth.
Yeah, so I think that that's what the subcommittee will get to, you know, mull over, what that is, what those visits are going to look like and, and how we want to structure them. Because I think that, I don't remember having those before, but I do really like the idea of something a little bit more informal. We got off track again.
So, we're interviewing everyone on the same day?
Yes. The finalists, yes.
I don't remember. Bill, how did we do that last time? Was that...
We never got to finalists last time. The, the screening committee only put forward Nancy.
Oh, right, but the screening committee interviewed...
One dropped. And one, um, based on late references, was asked to, basically they dropped as well. And we got one. Isn't that how it went?
Did we conduct all those interviews on the same, three different days, right?
I thought there was three different interviews.
And three different days, right? It was all one day?
They're usually back-to-back-to-back so that...
But do we need to rehash the past now? Shouldn't we?
No, we're moved, you know, although we'll make informed decisions.
No, I was just thinking about how that went with, um, three interviews back-to-back.
Well, then we should ask the general, the general question.
How does it usually go?
How does it usually go? I seem to remember other days whenever you did, spent a few hours interviewing them all in one day.
I, I prefer, you know, to, to work with a committee like yourselves. You, you obviously have to prep for the interview. You want to be asking the same thing of all the candidates so that you can compare apples to apples to apples. You will have, um, I think, and you need to decide this, when do you work the best? This is time-consuming and it's draining. Not only is the actual interview of each candidate, is that going to take some time? That's going to be, you know, an hour or so that you're going to be engaged in a conversation. But then there's going to be time after that candidate leaves, each candidate leaves, and there's going to be a final deliberation time, which may or may not be a couple hours. I know that my preference is not to go into the wee hours of the night or the morning trying to come up with a, an important decision or argue, you know, one way or the other. So, as you put, as you finalize this, you know, you might want to think about, is it best to invest a weekday or a weekend or a night or an afternoon or two afternoons? You know, because obviously you have families and you have jobs and things like that, so it's... Because obviously you have families and you have jobs and things like that, so it's-
As you've got it potentially on this draft, you have, if you have three finalists on March 22nd, what you're looking at is a 6 o'clock, a 7:10 and like an 8:20, if you, if you want to give yourself a little stretch, an hour and then a little stretch, or it could be condensed a little bit. And so you're beginning at approximately 8:30 roughly, if, if you did it that evening, to then deliberate on candidate and go through a process with nine individuals on the process of ranking or deciding. Or you postpone it till a day later or two days later and then reconvene for the, for the discussions. So, you know, you can't, you just can't predict, as Mr. Ryder said, you just can't predict what will happen. You might have three candidates and you're really struggling and there are different opinions, or there may be a clear frontrunner, or you identify three and someone gets a job somewhere else and then you're down to two. It's hard to predict what will happen in the end, but I think Chris, Chris's point is a good point. Patty, if in fact you said, we're going to do three that night and we're going to decide, then you're looking at 10:00, 10:30, and the question is, is that comfortable for you? Or do you want to frame it in another way? Is that fair?
And the other piece is the community, because these are all live, these interviews, right?
Mm-hmm.
So making sure that, you know, everyone can watch all of those too.
So that people can watch it?
Yeah.
But their, their opportunity for participating will have passed.
Again, I think you need a couple of days of reflection.
Oh, no, not about participant, but like being on the TV and watching.
I really think you need a couple of days of reflection. And if we can't build that into our timeline, that it's not good, because as you said from the very get-go, it's a very meaningful thing. So a couple of days that we need to have a site visit or to have a day of reflection, I absolutely think we should build that in there.
And I don't think we, this, this calendar totally allows for that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, because look, because we have-
The 22nd is-
The vote is not till the 27th.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Yeah, so.
Oh, I wonder why it's not, it would be nice if it was a Tuesday, because that's our regular meeting day.
March 27th?
Is a, that's our meeting day, our regular, that's our regular meeting. Yeah. So we could certainly meet ahead of that, give ourselves a few days.
So basically, if we wanted to do a site visit, it would be on the 23rd and the 26th?
Right.
Or all on the 23rd?
Right, right.
Okay, well, that allows us a little bit, those two days to, if no weather issues.
Right.
Oh, this is all like in a month.
Yeah.
Our times really close on with these focus groups and just getting the word out there.
So that, I mean, that's two weeks away and-
And break in between.
And I know from future things, you know, you get a lot of, oh, I didn't know, I didn't see about it, so two weeks and it's not even announced yet is kind of a tight-
Yeah. It'll really be the tw, that one, it's only really the community one that I worry about getting the word out, because the staff, we can email them directly, all of them, multiple times between now and then. But getting the word out for that community one is the one that I'm worried about. Either doing, you know, an all call or-
I think we need to do multiple all calls.
Yeah. And the pop-up on the website and email.
Enterprise something and-
Yeah. And we did get, so the survey was open for, for a week. It was open Monday to Monday, closed yesterday afternoon, and we had 472 people reply to it, which is a lot. I think we had 100 last time. So there's a lot of good information in those that we can also use. Chris, was there other things that you wanted to, to mention or address, or do we even get to the end? I don't even know if we made it to the end of the timeline.
Well, you're, you're pretty much there. You, you obviously can change this timeline. This is just, you know, recommended and it's to meet, it's to meet the expedited search requirement, you know, to get you into the mix. But as Patty, you know, just iterated, you may find yourself in some very interesting positions when it comes down to your final choice and who's left for whatever reason. And then how you, how you want to aggressively pursue your first choice. So there, it's going to take some time. It's going to take some time and you may be surprised at, you know, what is going to tip your hand and how badly you're going to want one candidate over another and the like.
And they'll take a job somewhere else. What happens?
Yes. Oh, absolutely. You know, bird in a hand type of thing.
So maybe if we could just add a possible site visit in that time period, you know, that that's not a definite, but that there is a possible site visit time from the, for the 23rd and the 26th. What's that?
So I heard very mixed messages. You really want the site visit?
I just want a possibility of it. I don't want a site visit. I just want us to be able to, if we're really deliberate and we're really feeling like we're really close with a couple of people, it just could, it could be that additional information for us. I don't want to do them, so I don't want to-
You don't have to though.
No, I mean, I just don't think, I don't see how it could help. I really don't. I'm, maybe I'm being cynical, but if they really are wonderful, then the people will tell you they're wonderful and if they're terrible, people are going to tell you they're going to talk to you.
It doesn't hurt to put it in with possible. What does it hurt?
Okay, you're right, you're right.
What does it hurt?
And I've got to say, being on the other side of those site visits, I've found them very helpful. So, I mean, that's as an administrator, being on the other side of it, but it's-
Potential site visits from March-
23rd and 26th.
23rd to 26th. I mean, in theory, we could go on the weekend.
The only problem is that's the one thing that you do not have control over in terms of scheduling. You may want it the 23rd to the 26th, but the candidate may, they have to coordinate everything.
Yeah.
Well, I think the physical dynamic, because in addition to what I was mentioning about just the building itself, I mean, the, the body language of the folks, if people are hanging out on the front step smoking cigarettes or something, or, or whatever is going on in the back lot or something, might generate a need for another in-house site visit. I do think we'd be remiss to not, and, and I'll volunteer to do, I, I do think we'd be remiss not to just physically be on site of all the buildings that that person is running right now.
And who gets to visit the person from California?
Or is the town paying for it? I'll do it.
Because that could happen.
Is it La Jolla?
It could happen.
Well, that's obviously not possible.
I can tell you all that.
Do we want to keep going with all these nuts and bolts in public though? I don't know.
I don't know, I don't think it hurts. I mean, I don't, I don't, you're right, but I don't think it hurts.
What do you guys think about that? Do you think we should keep going on with all these nuts and bolts?
I'm okay with having it in there, because I'd rather have it and not need it than need it and not have it. But that's just how I look at life.
Yeah. What do you think, Megan?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think going and visiting is going to make it or break it for me. I think it's going to be more of a, just a, I don't know.
Yeah, you just know. You can just straighten things.
Yeah, I mean, but there is a point of seeing the buildings and seeing what type of pride they may take in that, where they're working and, so I can kind of see, so it wouldn't hurt having it there. Yeah. I mean, there's no harm with it in there, I don't think.
I mean, I think we're also coming from the assumption that we are hiring someone who is already a sitting superintendent, and we don't know that that's going to be the case. You know, if you're interviewing a director of student pupil personnel or HR or whatever at facilities, that would be easier, but I don't want to make assumptions about who we might end up interviewing. I don't have a problem putting it in. I just wanted to go on record as, but I don't want to, I don't want to do them. I don't think that they'll be as helpful. And I am worried about, like, what happens, because this is public, so anyone that's doing their homework, they're going to see possible site visits and there, there's three days in there. Are they going to like pause at that?
No, I think people that are paying attention are going to see-
Why don't we ask in other one, other searches that you're doing, are there incorporated site visits? Percentage-wise, give the percentage-wise.
I think it depends where you're coming from. For example, Massachusetts, you see a lot of site visits. New England, you see a lot of site visits. New York, not so much.
And that's another thing, I, from, like, as I said before, with the, with, if you're going to do one for somebody you really like, that's not fair. You really have to do all three. And what happens if we have a candidate from New York or Connecticut? Those are kind of tough site visits to do, so.
Then you can't do it. Or you could do a virtual one. I mean, you could do, set up something where they're walking through.
If you get yourself, if you get to a point where you're, you know, you're, as you said, you're really close with two people and you really want to do that, you can simply move your decision, decision date by a week. I mean, I think, I think dealing with the unknown at this moment is hard to do. And I think it will become more and more clear as you go through the process, and you still are in control of your proposed calendar.
Right.
You have the latitude to change by a vote of the committee, right? So I think as it becomes more clear, knowing how each member feels and having options is still an opportunity for you.
What you got, John?
No, I actually agree with that wholeheartedly, and I motion that we approve this proposed timeline.
As, as it stands, without any changes?
Without any change.
Is there a second for that?
I second it.
Any last discussion?
Yeah, I would like to put in the possible site visit dates.
Well, isn't that an amendment to the motion?
Oh, okay. I was just having a discussion about it, but-
Is there any discussion about, make your amendment and then we'll vote on it.
I'll make amendment to put in a possible site visit from March 23rd, or March 23rd and March 26th.
So I'll second it so that we can discuss it.
All right, okay. Thoughts?
Again, I'd rather have it in there and not need it than need it and not have it. But as we just found out, we have the opportunity to change this.
As much as we want.
And the 23rd and 26th aren't set dates anyway.
Not at all.
Correct.
So I don't, you know, I don't know.
So the reason why I would like to put it in is so we have that in place right now if people are looking at our timeline, just so, because people are applying and that they know that there is the possibility of a site visit, if we're going to have a possibility of a site visit.
Would you like to say possible or potential? What did you say? Possible?
Possible.
Okay. I just want to make sure I get it right. John?
I'm fine with having it in there as like, and, you know, below where it says start date, July 1st, 2015, and then just, and then saying maybe that, that, that with it being no earlier, you know, a possible site visit may take place with, and then whatever the timeline, with it being no earlier than whatever the date we agreed is a date that, so they know it's not, you know, very early in the process for them.
Almost like a little asterisk.
Yeah, just a little asterisk type thing, you know, as opposed to having it be a date.
It should be anyway, because everything else is pretty set and this is a potential, not a, or a possible, not a actual.
Just the edit on the July 1st, 2018.
Possible site visit. I never noticed. That's really funny. And the edit of the 18. Thank you.
So we need to amend that amendment.
What?
We need to-
Okay, I motion that we amend Leah's amendment to read that we would approve the proposed timelines as it's constructed here, but to add an asterisk in a, in a separate spot below where it says start date. That would read, including the possibility of a site visit, which would take place no earlier than, what's the date I want to put in here?
The, after, the interview, so.
22nd.
All right, yeah, the 22nd.
No earlier than March 22nd.
Yeah.
No earlier than March 22nd.
Or you could say after March 22nd.
Okay, yeah, no, yeah, no earlier than March 23rd. It would take place no earlier than March 23rd. So that way they look at it and they see, okay, it's not before that point.
Yeah.
With a simple edit, because we can't do any more amendments.
Yeah. It's just a simple, okay, Sharon, have we lost you? Are you still with us? I know. It got really muddy for a minute there.
I think I have one.
Okay. So we have to vote on the amendment? We're going to vote on your amendment and then we're going to vote on the timeline. Aren't you glad you're sitting through all this?
Yeah.
Nobody seconded my amendment.
I'll second it so we can vote on it.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. No, I'm opposed to it.
Any abstentions? And one, no.
I'll abstain because I'm concerned, the timeline may work out perfect and we may not need a site visit. And we may go through the interview process on the 22nd and we may say, bingo, we got our person.
That's why it's possible.
Or we may come into, we eliminated one, now we have two. Now we might consider site visit. We might, we might want to consider discussing things a little bit more. We may want some more research on individuals. And that may take that 27, 28 out a little bit further. So that would be my concern. I really think we're going to have fun with the interviews, we're going to learn a lot from the interviews, and we're going to find a person in the interviews. So the site district, potentially, okay. But I think potentially you may have to adjust those dates a little bit, and I want that freedom to do that.
We have that freedom. Patty said that.
Not if we go by the timeline.
We can, we can change the timeline, right?
Well, then we change the timeline, but not, if, if we're going to vote on the timeline, as is, then to change the timeline is obviously we have something to decide later on.
Right.
I'm okay with that, but I think you need to have that flexibility after the 22nd. And like, my feeling is on the 22nd, we're going to be fine.
Gosh, can we do an amendment to the amendment?
Oh, my God, no!
You can't have more amendments.
That's wrong with the possible part of it, though. The possible means it might not even happen, so.
We're all agreeing on the same thing, we're just coming at it from different-
Let's just pause. Are there any other things that we are making them sit through that they don't need to sit through?
It's, it's, it's okay.
Are you sure?
Yeah, don't, don't worry about it.
That's why we're here.
This is your timeline, this is your search. We're going to facilitate the search, but this is your search, you've got to be comfortable with this. Understand that we've recommended this, whether you vote tonight, you know-
We're voting tonight.
To approve this as, to approve this as-
We have to.
Is this written or with various contingencies, asterisks or otherwise? It's fine. You can change that with another vote down the road.
I was going to say, we can go back and-
And it won't be this painful.
We can go back and say, we need to amend our timeline and do it. So why don't we just vote it like it is? If we want site visits, we can put them in later, right? Because we can do what we want.
Well, we already have a vote on record and there's all ayes and you're against and an abstention.
Only for the amendment.
That was only for the amendment.
We still haven't voted on-
So we're, we're able to have a discussion right now, right?
Yeah, we're still, now we're talking about the general timeline.
So again, my thought on this is if we don't have that possibility right now, if, where is this timeline going to be posted?
It'll be in with the packet on the website with all the other application materials.
So I just, I, I want our possible applicants to be able to see that that is a possibility for a site visit.
You can put that in the questions you asked them at the beginning. Would you be prepared to have a site visit? So you can put that little thing in their head, right?
Sure.
So, well, that's why I think that I wanna.
Or the people that vet them and talk to them could say, this committee is considering a site visit, is that, you know, and this would be the approximate date. Is that a way to handle it?
Well, if you have it as proposed in the asterisk beneath, right beneath the calendar, then it sort of is a compromise between both. It's not formally within the timeframe, it is on there for people to see, and it gives you the latitude to make that decision on the 22nd if you so desire to do so.
Okay, is that John's amendment?
Yeah, that's what John.
Can I rescind my no vote on that?
No, that's cool, I'm glad you said, because, because what I was gonna say was, what was the compelling, I was gonna ask you and Bill.
Yeah.
What's the compelling aversion you have against it being, you're just possibly?
If you have.
But you're already cool, so.
No, but if you have all these formal dates, either the visit is formal or not. I just didn't like the asterisk, but I, I like what you said, that it's, it's a compromise.
Sure.
So maybe, that's why I, yeah.
Okay, let's vote. Are we all?
I actually have one more thing to say about this, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I just, I, I hear what Bill was saying about being hesitant to vote on this because my being changing.
Leah, I gotta just say something, another Jerry Maguire reference. We hadn't yet hello. They were already on board.
I know that part, but I'm, I'm actually talking about a different piece. So, talking about that these dates are subject to change, you know, I don't know if that would kind of make that easier for you, Bill, in this of.
No, I just want flexibility at the end, because based on the interviews, we may need, may or may not need flexibility.
Right.
We may or may not need.
But this is, yeah, but this is our timeline, so we can have as much flexibility as we feel like we need.
I understand that, but you're gonna send this timeline out.
Yeah, so my thought was that, I know we already have an asterisk, but if we had like a double asterisk.
Both of them just said they were good with it.
That, right, no, but John, this is on another, the other part, about the March 27th and March 28th, that those are subject to change. That was, that was it.
I don't wanna.
No, we don't need to put that, you don't need to put that, no, because it happens.
And we need it to close as soon as possible.
It says proposed timeline, too.
Well, we'll say that anymore.
It doesn't say.
It'll say, it'll say timeline, but we don't, we need this to, we need the process to appear as expedited as it is, and we want our end date of announcing a position and trying to hire somebody to be comparable to other districts that are doing that. We don't want somebody to look at this and be like, well, they're not even gonna finish their process until the 28th of March. I'll have already heard about X, Y, and other district by then. We need it to be when people are gonna be accepting jobs. And if they can wait a day for us, great, but if they're looking at waiting two weeks for us to get our act together and make an offer, they're gonna accept whatever other offers they've got. That's my thought on that, sorry.
I would, I would also suggest if, if you need more time, the community will be understanding if you need more time to make, you just make the argument, this is an important selection, we need more time. They'll, they'll buy it up. The point doesn't eliminate all your candidates. But, you know, you're, you're talking about, assuming you go with all your asterisk pieces, okay, you've got some thinking to do, you know, privately and collectively. This is gonna get regional and possibly national attention. Falmouth is Falmouth, it's on Cape Cod. You know, relocating to Cape Cod for, you know, my last superintendency or something like that is, is a different crowd than relocating to Taunton for my last superintendency. Okay, so you may get people from California. I don't, I don't know, but it's quite possible. It's a very attractive location. So if you're talking about site visits and scheduling them, then you're also talking about who's going, who's paying, you know, I mean, I mean, there's a lot of issues that come up. So just be, mull that over, you've got time, but, you know, think about that, too.
So, we have our amendment with our asterisk about possibility of site visits occurring no earlier than whatever that date was that I'm sure Sharon got, March 23rd. Thank you. Does anybody have any other issues with the timeline?
Other than the date?
Other than fixing the 18th?
Right, no.
No, eight, yes.
2015 to 2018.
2018, thank you. So can we get, I don't wanna stifle, but I also don't wanna linger. Can we get a motion to approve it?
Don't we have to vote down all the amendments?
We voted on the amendment, so it would be a motion to approve with the amendment.
Which is the asterisk?
Right.
Didn't we, didn't, oh, we have to re-vote?
We only voted on the amendment.
Right.
We voted to amend this document to include the asterisk that says possibility of site visits to occur no earlier than March 23rd.
Within the course of that discussion, though, if I'm not mistaken, Teri had said she was good with that amendment, if I'm not mistaken, and Bill said, too.
Right, but that wasn't the original motion, which we need to get back to now.
Yeah, now we're back to the original timeline.
I think what you say is, we'd like to vote on the original motion as amended. Is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay, so I'll say, we'd like to motion on the, I might make an amendment on the original motion.
A motion on the original.
A motion to approve the original amendment.
Timeline, as amended, as amended.
As amended with the asterisk saying.
Possibility of site visit.
Possibility of a site visit no earlier than March 23rd, 2018.
Is there a second?
A second, yeah.
All in favor of approving the timeline as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Whew, that was a long way to go.
Right.
All right, we got there.
Is that about no drama on here?
No drama, just a lot of weeds.
We had our discussions, we got through it, and we're, we're there.
We're all there.
We need to be.
So.
With smiles on our faces.
Chris, is there anything else that you wanted to say about the subcommittee or the, the interview committee? You touched on both pieces, I just didn't, I just wanted to circle back in case there's anything you wanna add before we do the rest of that work.
Well, my suggestion, yeah, is, is you identify the subcommittee, that you charge the subcommittee with, you know, working with the chair and with us, so that you don't have to convene as a committee of the whole, and that if they need to change a date here or to assign a location there, that, you know, they have the latitude to do that.
Are there any other questions for him about that concept?
Yes, just with the, in the interview process, and I mean that with not, with that number of people that are gonna be interviewing, is there a set formula? You don't even have to answer this necessarily now, but it would be helpful if there's timeframes that each person can ask, and then if there's, you know, so we're kind of interviewing everybody, this person got X amount of time, and then even with the course of the discussion afterwards, be it right away afterwards or be it another day afterwards, do you have like a set chart that we could follow with a template?
For the, for the interview committee?
Yeah.
The semifinalist interview committee? Yeah, we'll spend a couple hours with the, with the interview committee going over, you know, potential questions, potential answers, how they would be scored, you know, you try to keep this, you try to keep this piece of the process extremely objective, okay, because you wanna be asking the same questions to everyone in the same way. You know, it's, it's tough to, to make it absolutely objective, but you try to keep it as objective as possible.
We're also there to support the full committee as they prep for their final interviews. So that's what, that's where we serve the role. I believe that it would be helpful if it's possible this evening to make the decision on the school committee's subcommittee.
Yes, we're definitely gonna, I mean, assuming everyone is all right with it, that's our next thing, is to vote on creating that subcommittee. I had heard back from a number of people about whether or not they could make the meetings or wanted to be part of it. Bill is available for some of the things that we already know the subcommittee would need to be participating in, Teri and Megan. Melissa, you are not available for a lot of them, but I didn't.
No, I can make it happen.
I just.
You're just talking about the focus groups stuff.
Yeah, the focus, those we know of.
The 26th and 28th.
Right.
I can make that happen.
And the sixth, the sixth?
Yes.
Yes, the 6th of March. Those are ones that we know the subcommittee will be meeting for, and then anything that might be coming up between now and then. So my suggestion would be to create the, to vote to create the subcommittee, and then have Bill, Teri, Megan, and Melissa serving on that. Oh, actually, that can't work, Bill and Teri. No, we can't have that many, because I'll have to be there. So let me ask you whether or not you all wanna.
Focus group, anybody could be there for us.
Yeah. Anyone can be there for the.
I can commit to a Monday focus group.
Right, there's no decisions made, so it doesn't matter how many.
As far as it goes further.
There's no decisions made. You can have everybody, there's no decisions made.
So from the focus group.
Oh, that's right, we're not actually voting or anything.
No, there's, no, so you don't have to worry about majority or anything.
Can I, can I just clarify this, because we're talking about the subcommittee.
Right.
Which is not gonna be the interview committee.
Not the screening committee.
No.
Correct.
So the subcommittee, which is only gonna be made up of school committee members.
Correct.
But it will not be made up of a quorum of school committee members.
But actually, Teri's point is right.
We don't, we don't have to worry about quorum because we're not making any decisions. This is just a group to help coordinate all the things that need to be coordinated. It's not a decision.
You're, you're gonna be, you're gonna be putting together the, the screening committee for, the interview committee for the semifinalists.
Right.
I don't think you should confuse, potentially confuse the focus groups with this school committee subcommittee.
Oh, no, they don't have to be the same.
No.
It is nice, I, I thought it would be easier if our subcommittee were the ones that were doing it.
There is a, there is an ease to that, but.
Yeah.
You may have other members who wanna join as well. I think the important piece, and we were recommending a three, no more than four-member subcommittee, that would be the touchstone for important decisions that had to be made without reconvening the entire school committee.
Okay. Teri, I would really like you to do that.
Okay.
If you're okay with that.
All right, that's to make up for never answering all my questions on this end of the table, yes, that's fine.
You've been through this before, and you have more historical perspective, so I want.
That makes me sound old, I don't, but that's all right.
No, but I would really like it if you, if you would do that. So explain that, do what exactly?
Be part of the subcommittee.
Be part of the subcommittee.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's my two cents. And Andrea, we know, is not available. Walter is not available. So Bill, Teri, Megan, you guys wanna weigh in on whether or not you wanna join? Teri and it's, and me.
My only holdback is that, you know, I do work full-time during the day, so if a lot of these fall into that timeframe, I don't wanna not be there for those, so that would be my only.
Would you be better covering focus groups? Because you know the focus groups are, at least one of them is later.
Yeah, and I can do the 26th of the focus groups.
Okay.
I don't work Mondays, but I don't wanna commit and then not be able to make it to anything.
No, totally, I appreciate that. Yeah, it's totally fair. But, I mean, I think there's, I mean, there's plenty, there's plenty of work to go around.
Yeah.
So I'm not worried.
Yeah, no.
Everyone is gonna be doing something, that's for sure. Bill, you've done it before, how do you feel?
I'm flexible, so I should be available.
I know, that's true. Melissa, what do you think? Would you rather work on, do focus groups or something else, or, because you're not available during the days either.
My schedule's wonky.
I know.
I am not. So, let me put it to you this way. If you, if you so decide, I can fix my schedule. I work the next few days, like, I can certainly work it out among my coworkers.
I think, I think I'm getting a little confused with, that's not, the focus, we're talking about focus, then we're talking about screening, then we're talking about sub.
Yeah.
Sub is not screening.
This is, yeah, separate.
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
So, so this.
This is.
Okay, because we also need two people on that.
Do we need to vote the names tonight, or do we just need to vote to establish this?
We just need to establish it.
Well, then why don't we just vote to establish and do all the nuts and bolts off alignment?
That's fine with me.
That's fair.
Okay?
Yeah.
That's great. Is there a motion to create the subcommittee?
Okay, I'll make a motion to create a subcommittee, a sub-evaluation, no, evaluation.
A superintendent search subcommittee. How about that?
Superintendent search subcommittee.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous? Great. Thanks, Teri, for keeping us focused. That's a good point. Okay, and then the other thing that we're gonna, I promise we'll actually figure out who the people are gonna be. I'm not worried. The only other piece is to.
I only have your phone number.
Is to look at the.
Will you see me tomorrow night?
That's right.
At the.
Climb it, yeah.
So the next piece is the actual screening committee. So, so I will be part of that, and I, I may be putting the cart ahead of everything, but I spoke with John about having him do the, do that screening committee as well, because of his background in interviews. Bill did it last time, Leah did it last time, so, in an effort to, you know, move around the responsibility. But then the rest of the group, we've got down as a member of the VIPS, it should be like the leadership, not just a volunteer.
It's the board, right?
Yeah, the board, the, a member, a parent vol, active parent volunteer through PTA or school council, a CPAC parent, faculty member, school administrator, town government, and then someone from the teachers' union, leadership.
Is the group that we hired to consult with us, do you think this is a good makeup?
Yeah, when talking to Teri, I, I suggested that you go after key people.
Okay, so you think this is a good representation here?
This was part of our recommendation.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I comment?
So I make a motion.
Oh, sorry, I wasn't, you wanna make a motion?
I wanna make a motion to accept this setup as.
As suggested.
As suggested by our.
Is there a second? John, discussion?
Yes, so I would like to see more equity group kind of represented within our search committee, and so I propose that we include No Place For Hate, a No Place For Hate member in our search committee. In thinking about exactly what we were talking about with representing Falmouth, I think that's a really important piece of representing equity and access within Falmouth.
John?
Adding anybody would make it a 10 people, so.
We would have to take someone out, because we're not adding two, because then we'd be at 11.
And with, and with the incorporation of No Place For Hate in, within the whole district, every, you know, it's like everybody is in, on board with that.
So, do you mean like No Place For Hate leadership? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, someone who's on the board or committee.
So not just, just like the VIPS is not just, I mean, we're all volunteers in public school, so not just a person that is a member, but someone who is in a leadership role.
But No Place For Hate is an organization, a community organization, is that?
Right, not just having like a, not just a, someone who is part of their Facebook group or whatever, but someone who's actually part of the leadership, just like with the VIPS, we want someone who's not just a volunteer, but part of the leadership, right? Is that what you mean?
Yes, that's what I mean. So, sorry, never mind. I just would like to have a, an active volunteer from volunteer in public schools, not just somebody that sits on their board, but somebody that's actually in.
In with kids?
Yeah, that is, but that, we don't have to talk about that right now. We can certainly talk about that later.
So now we have to vote on Leah's amendment, right?
Was it seconded?
Well, I kinda put it out as a discussion, I guess.
Yeah, let's discuss it before we get that far.
Was it seconded, it wasn't?
It wasn't, no, it wasn't even a motion, so let's just talk about it as a.
And I didn't make a motion.
Oh, you didn't make a motion?
No, I'm just, I'm having discussion.
Okay.
Just in regular discussion, so.
I'm gonna be leery of my amendments right now.
Right, but if we wanna do Robert's rules there and leave the sake of time, if you think about it, if you wanna do it, then motion it. If not, then we're just.
Well, I'd love to hear your feedback on that, before I put a.
I'm not gonna discuss something unless it's a motion and then it's seconded.
Well, we're just discussing the general composition.
We're just discussing the general.
Because a motion would have to include whether or not we're taking anyone else out.
Has a separate thing of, of any, of any particular group adding that person.
Excuse me, but I made a, didn't I make a motion to accept this?
Yes, and we seconded it, we're at discussion.
Oh, we're not, oh, I see.
We're in discussion.
Now we're at discussion.
Yeah, we're in discussion.
So, but if it's in order to change it, don't you have to make?
Yeah, but she's not saying she wants to change it.
All right.
She's just throwing it out there as a thought for.
As a discussion.
Discussion.
Okay, my point with that was just any, any addition of it all would end up being 10, and then we'd have to either trump somebody off or add a 11.
Not necessarily, John, it doesn't matter. Not necessarily, John, it doesn't matter.
Well, it would, it would have the potential of having a lock. You could have a five, you could have a five, five vote.
You could if, in fact, it was, the process is, is like so rigid that it's really voting, and I think what you're doing is you're choosing the top three, so the numbers, I think, could work.
Okay, well, I just look, we have nine school committee members, so I'm just kinda going by that.
You're putting a value to the questions, the Q and A, so we-
This is the interview committee, right?
The interview process, right? And then the three that go to the, the school committee.
Yes.
Right? So the chances or the probability of five, five? Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about that too much.
You wouldn't worry about the need to stay at a non-number?
But you're coming to a finite one here, they're coming to three.
No, I wouldn't. What, what you wanna worry about in, in the composition of your interview committee is that, you know, they can, they can act as a representative of that group, that constituent group, formal or otherwise. In other words, I would ask, you know, a teachers' association, you know, president, okay, I wanna hear, I wanna know what you wanna hear from a superintendent. What would be the most important thing for you to hear from a potential superintendent candidate? And then craft a question that would hopefully get to that, to that answer. So it'd be the same thing for, you know, your, your group. And I don't know if they fit nicely into that mix or not, I really don't. I don't know how many groups, you know, there are in, in Falmouth and the like, but you, the constituent representation is important. You know, you may have people here in dual roles, there may be, you know, somebody on here who's also a parent, but you've, you know, picked them to be, you know, representing, you know, the municipal government. Well, I don't wanna hear your parent question, I wanna hear your municipal government question, type of thing, okay? I mean, they will be able to assess all the answers to all the other questions, but that's who they're representing at the table at that time, so that's what, you know, I would caution, don't worry about odd numbers.
So, don't worry about odd numbers. Okay.
Or don't worry about even numbers.
Or even numbers, whichever, not having odd, okay. Is there any other discussion about any other piece of this?
So, with that, I will make an amendment to add a representative from No Place for Hate, a leadership, who has a leadership role in No Place for Hate or committee role.
I'll second it, even though I don't hardly ever do that, but it's a compelling argument, and now that I don't feel like I have to kick someone else off, I'm good with it. Any discussion? Any last minute discussion? All in favor of approving the composition of the superintendent schools screening committee as, oh wait, do we even vote on the amendment?
Did we?
Backwards, we didn't vote on the amendment, sorry.
So, is there a discussion on this now?
Yeah, discussion on the amendment.
Okay, so I would say then, where are we capping it? Since now we're saying that we can have 10, you know, there could be another group that comes out, you know, that, we have, you know, various different communities within our community.
Sure.
You know, you could have groups that come out and say, "Well, how come I'm not added on there?
And I think we will have that.
Are we just gonna go add infinitum here, or we, like, or is there a number if we go?" Because I think it should mirror, we have nine people in the school committee, and I think that nine came up, where there was a reason somebody came up with that nine. And I see that we are at Lagerjams all the time and things, and I see that it does become, with all due respect, it does become where you're stuck. And I think, you know, there's a reason that we have nine school committee members, so, and then on the other side, we have somebody, another group, we would then be, being discourteous to that group potentially, if you wanna look at it like that, and there's just gotta be a line at some point number-wise, so that's why I want to discuss that.
Yeah, that's a fair point. I mean, I think there is no end to the number of representative groups that we could want or have, you know, we have so many different segments of the, of the community that would serve us all well sitting on this, but we have to-
But we have to assume also that each member of these, each of these members here is going to go to the community forums, is going to take input from No Place for Hate, from, you know, nondiscrimination hiring concerning, concerned people. They're gonna, they're gonna get, gather all that, or they shouldn't be selected to be on the committee, so.
I agree, and I actually think that it's interesting, because we're going by what you recommended.
Right.
You know, I'm going by what you seconded, as is.
And now we're changing it.
And now, then you're saying, "Oh, you can go with 10," but no, you said nine, so I'm going by your recommendation, you told me nine. Now you're saying it's okay to do 10, you know, well, I'm confused, I'm a simple guy.
All I was saying, nine or 10, I feel like we can handle the process without getting to loggerheads.
But yet, you did submit a document that said nine.
We did.
So my, my piece with putting this amendment forward is that I feel like we are very fortunate to have a community organization like No Place for Hate, that really is so community-involved and is so much of an advocate for diversity within our community and for more marginalized groups. So I look at this as bringing that voice into this process, and I know that there are other organizations that do this, it's just, No Place for Hate is, is a very well-known organization within our community, and they facilitate so many different forums and meetings and-
I agree with that, I was happy to host them at Martin Luther King Breakfast at my, at my hotel.
Right.
I'm all on board with the, the program, but just for the sake of what this breakdown is and respecting what these folks recommended to us, and knowing that the numbers do end up, we've, we've seen it for years of how we get stuck here, okay?
Any last comments? All in favor of adding No Place for Hate leadership to the list of school screening committee members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
Abstentions? Okay, doesn't pass. So now we're back to the main motion, which is approving this as it stands. All in favor of approving it as written?
Aye.
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 All opposed, or any opposed?